Should we do that in absentia? I guess if you would want to, wherever you're at, presumably if you have a flag, we're going to imagine we do. Join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. That does seem a bit more awkward that way than what we're used to. Mr. Diamond, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Having none, you all have your agenda. Could I have a motion to approve it, please? Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Brian. All in favor, say aye. Changes to our agenda. I didn't hear anybody remotely, so we'll... Agreements with that. So we will call that motion passed. Our agenda is approved. Next up is action on our minutes, which are attached to your board docs there that you can see. We have two sets of minutes from our previous regular meeting and the special meeting on April 1st.
Can I just tell those remotely Karen, Mike, and Tom to put your microphones on? You can leave yours on. Karen and Mike, can you turn your microphones on?
I have mine on now.
The meetings from April 1st and our special meeting on... Special meeting on April 1st. And then our regular meeting on March 9th.
Thank you. Motion from Diamond, seconded by Rick to approve the minutes from our previous two meetings. Are there any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Next up is action on the vouchers.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. This is Mike. I'd like to make a motion from...
Mike, if you can hear me, you need to unmute, I think. I can't hear you.
He's got his mic on, but we'll have to have somebody here that's...
Go ahead, Mike. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Fund 10 vouchers totaling $1,339,303.36, building funds 49 vouchers totaling $844,583.07 as presented.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Mr. Westrick. You got beat. The motion will be seconded by Rick. So, motion from Mike, seconded by Rick to approve the vouchers that you just heard there. Are there any questions on the vouchers? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, that motion signified by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are approved. Public participation is next, and we had no one indicating that they wanted to join us for that, so we will move past that. Referendum update. First up, on letter 80 there is update from Mike Huffman. And is Mike logged in?
Yep.
I have not seen him, so...
Yes, he's waiting.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. You all set?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
So, lots has changed in the construction world since we last met. Obviously, COVID-19 has had a tremendous impact on the construction industry, but due to the governor's stay-at-home order listing construction as an essential service, we are, of course, continuing to work. That doesn't mean things haven't changed on the construction site. Most of the meetings that are now conducted are conducted just as we're doing now via video conferencing. Just in the last week, we've had a number of pre-construction meetings where we bring subcontractors in that are new to the elementary school sites and talk about their scope of work, rules that they have to follow, and we do this all via video conferencing. So, getting pretty savvy at the video conference lately, and that's an important piece of keeping everybody safe within the construction industry. Also, if you have been by the construction sites, hopefully you notice that there's social distancing taking place. Some subcontractors have gone to the point where they will start wearing masks even just in the last week and starting next week. So there certainly is a focus on it. But adhering to the schedule is still an important feature of our projects, and I'm happy to say that that is happening. So if you were by East in the last couple of days, you will see that the masonry crew has started putting the exterior brick on that building. It looks very attractive. And there was a big crew out there when I was there on Friday observing some of their work. So excellent progress there. Also at East, the roof is 100% complete there. So as the masons work up, they'll be able to put in temporary barriers at the windows and start some of the indoor work. We did have a pre-construction meeting with Common Links, who is our subcontractor for steel studs and drywall, and we've talked about getting their work going once complete enclosure is accomplished there. West is a little bit behind East, but there also the roof is fully complete. The concrete block walls that are behind what will be the brick finish are in place, and they are starting on the air barrier that gets sprayed on to those concrete block walls before they start the exterior brick. So good progress there. Some of the mechanical trades are in doing their rough-in work. Plumbing, HVAC, and electrical, all are at East and are starting at West. Harmony, block walls are up at Harmony as well. That one's slightly behind West. Other activities that have happened, there's been quite a bit of work on the furniture fixtures and equipment, and really that effort by way of selecting furniture to meet the budget has been completed, and now we're just looking at the overall numbers. And by our next board meeting, we'll have a complete picture of furniture fixtures and equipment to share with you. I think I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about the progress before I talk about the middle school and the guaranteed maximum price there.
Does anyone have questions for Mike? I guess I'm hearing none, Mike, so why don't you segue to your next...
Joe, I think Karen started to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Karen, Karen, did you have a question?
I did not. I just have some slight interruptions. My children are trying to join into the meeting.
No question from you, Karen? You okay?
Yes, I am good.
Oh, okay. I guess we'll go back to Mike, and there aren't any questions on our progress to date, so why don't you take us up to the next action thing that you've got for us here?
Yeah. I wanted to address the documents that are in your board packet with respect to the the middle school and the bidding activity. Before I do that, Stephen, I see your name is on the agenda item. Is this something you want me to roll with, or did you want to take that, Stephen?
Hey, Mike, you can go ahead and address it.
Okay. Great. So, we've talked previously about the bids that we received there. All of the work in vetting those bids and verifying those bids has been complete, and we're now to the point where we're asking you to make an amendment to JP Cullen's contract to include the work at the middle school. So what we're asking for is outlined in the memorandum that was sent to you from Rich, and that is to advance the base work of that bidding, and the dollar values are listed there in your letter at just over $7 million. Now, this does not include the items that we had identified as an alternate bid, so there were some remodeling components within the center portion of the school, and those alternates also are listed in the memo at $247,000. We do not have to make a decision on that now because the middle school project will start with the addition and then will work towards the interior. So we have quite a bit of time before we would have to take action on those alternates, and at the moment, we're not requesting that. So this is just to advance the base bid work at the middle school. Questions with that?
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. This is Brian Quapple. In the letter, it said that there was some value engineering that was executed, and some of those value engineering suggestions were accepted. Can you just kind of highlight what those accepted value engineering suggestions were?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So value engineering happens really multiple times throughout the project development. So Plunkett Raisage pulled together their drawings. We did an extensive page turn. A part of that page turn is to look for things that either were miscommunicated and we can scale back on the cost. So that whole process happened as it should in the design phase, and we also looked at, you know, how can we do things, do the same thing for less throughout the design process? But now we get to the bid portion, and we bring in essentially a whole bunch of experts in their particular focus area of the project. So you've got the subcontractors that come in. So we have one last opportunity before we sign contracts with all the subcontracting community to say, hey, did you identify anything during your bidding process that seemed different from your normal practices of work? And can you bring it to our attention? And then we can evaluate it as to whether or not, yes, that's a quality aspect that we want to continue with, or gee, there's an area where we can scale back a little bit. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples where those items were brought forward. We tested it with the design team and said, yes, we can do something slightly different. So for instance, in the middle school, there were some light ceiling design and lighting fixtures in the cafeteria that were a little bit fussy, and we had an opportunity to simplify the ceiling a little bit, the levels of the ceiling, and the type of light fixtures that went into the ceiling. Still good, very high-quality fixtures, but a little bit less fussy in the architectural sense. There was a vapor barrier that got continued on down the wall and then wrapped over the foundation. I think that was actually a flaw in the drawings. It got pointed out by a subcontractor, and we were able to scale that back. It was a $19,000 difference by getting that vapor barrier just exactly where it needs to be, but not any farther than it needs to be. There was another good one that was a change in acoustical ceiling tiles. So if you look right above Rich's head, you'll see a suspended acoustical tile ceiling. And the one that's right above his head is a very, very basic ceiling tile. There were... We had the ability, just by changing manufacturers and going to a USG product, which is a very, very high-quality product, by changing the tile out to a USG product, we were able to save $8,000. So really good input from a ceiling contractor, and we thought that was a good one. We took that. We also found that there was acoustical grouting inside the concrete block that was more extensive than we really needed. So we were able to focus on where do we need that, where do we have acoustically sensitive areas, and where are we requiring grouting of the block for acoustical purposes that we absolutely need it, and where are we requiring it where, gosh, in retrospect, that's a little bit excessive? So we were able to save some money there. There also were some examples on the HVAC side where there were some tweaks that saved. So those are the, I think, the biggest ones that I would highlight. Stephen, would you add anything to that list I said there? I mean, certainly there's more, but those are kind of the highlights.
I think you covered the highlights very well. There was a whole bunch of different options that we went through and vetted, and the design team got to weigh in, and everyone felt good about the options that were carried forward. So that was a plus in my book.
Now, I think one final comment I'll have here is that our bidding has gone quite well on the elementary school and on the middle school here now. We've really been fairly close to the project estimates. You know, this one, we might have hoped had gone, you know, a little bit better. I think you're going to see as we come back with the high school that the bidding climate is a little bit different now, and it's made things a little bit harder. The first look at bids that have come in for the high school, I think, is a positive scenario. I'm reticent to talk completely about that bid process, but we had a good day with the high school bidding. So in balance, elementary school, middle school, high school, we're now past the real anxiety level. You know, we know what we think we know, but until you see the bids, you really can't say, oh, my gosh. The real danger of miscalculating on the estimate and not getting the bids we want, that's really behind us. So I can go as far as to say that we had a good day on bidding for the high school, and anxiety level should be considerably dropped. And I think with that, I'll just say that we are requesting your approval. With your approval, we would issue a notice to proceed that was also included in your bid package, or in your, excuse me, your board packet, and we would add $7,868,000 to JP Cullen's contract via amendment. And I'll stop there.
Mike, this is Karen Hall.
Yes.
So I guess kind of the bottom line out of all of this is that we essentially came in almost $28,000 under budget for the middle school. Is that correct?
You recall, we talked about pressure relief valves.
Yep.
The question was asked maybe two board meetings ago. What do you do if you're going to, if you're over budget? And I said, well, we've built in some pressure relief valves. So I would say that the middle school, yes, is absolutely under budget with the base bid conditions, but we didn't do well enough to pick up automatically that alternate bid, that pressure relief. I think that you might be in a position later, when we look at the total picture with the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, where we are with the whole dollars, we look across the total project budget, you might be in a position to pick up that alternate. It's just as of this good day, we're under budget on the base bid, but not able to take on the alternate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
It's another question.
This is obviously an action item that we're going to want to move with. So the proposed motion is included in the memo. If someone wants to bring that to the table, we'll see what we can get done.
I guess with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign the notice for JP Cullen to proceed into the construction phase of the middle school project.
I'll second it.
Bear with us, folks. We have a little bit of a lag here. So we're going to give that motion to Diamond, because she happens to be sitting next to me, and I could hear her first, although I think Karen was making the same motion. And we're going to give the second on that to Tom. Yeah, Tom was seconding that as it was being made. So motion from Diamond, seconded by Tom, as you heard. Are there any other questions on that motion? If not, we're going to roll call, vote that. And bear with me here. I'm going to do the remote, folks, first. Mike Pierce, if you can hear me, you're up first. Yes. Mike is a yes. Karen?
Yes.
Is a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Is a yes. I'll go next. Joe is a yes. Diamond?
Yes.
Is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Brian?
Yes.
Is a yes. Seven, zero, that motion passes. Thank you, folks. We are proceeding to construct and renovate our middle school. Thank you. Okay, then while we have our minds on those types of things at the middle school, item C is discussion and possible action on the easement at the middle school that Stephen had previously told us about. So... Oh, I'm sorry. So it's like the one Steve previously told us about, but it in fact is not that one. So Stephen, take it away.
Well, after all that excitement, I'll bore you to death with another easement agreement here. So the construction project at the high school, if you guys remember, we obtained the lot to the west of the high school back in 2006. Those lots sat next to each other just fine up until now, where the STEM addition is actually going to spill over and cross the lot line into the lot that we purchased back in 2006. So with that building crossing the lot lines, we had to go and work with the city of Milton to update our certified survey map. And in the process of updating the certified survey map for the high school lot, they take a look at all of the existing utilities that run through that lot. And it was found that there is a water main and a sanitary sewer that run along the far west side of the lot, kind of right behind Dave's Ace Hardware and right next to Link's Auto that was not ever captured and recorded with the city to allow the city to come onto our property to repair said line if needed. So we worked with our attorney, drafted up a utility easement agreement that would allow a 50-foot-wide path for the city to access those utilities and restore it back as they're owned by them but run through our property. So that's the long story short behind that.
Okay. That also is an action item. We've got a proposed motion included there. If someone would pick that up?
I'll make a motion to approve the utility easement agreement resolution at North High School. I'll present it.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion from Rick and seconded by Diamond on the floor to approve the utility easement that Stephen just told us about. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote on that. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes. Thank you. Okay. On we go. Item three is Human Resources Committee report. Our HR committee has met a couple of times, if not more, in the most recent timeframe here. So I am going to transfer to Tom Westrick to give us some of the updates, and I believe Rich will probably help him with a few of those. So go ahead, Mr. Westrick.
Okay. As you said, Joe, that the HR committee has actually met three times since our last school board meeting. We met March 18th. That initially was to talk about plans for the school closure and what to do with our employees, the very initial conversation on that. We also talked about the health insurance update, I'll transfer to Dean. We talked about the near-site or onsite clinic situation and where that process is, as well as teachers on-call. We had a meeting on March 30th, basically to discuss what to do with our staff during the downtime. We had an update on that on April 1st, and that was just prior to the special board meeting when the board approved to pay the staff through April 24th. I believe Chris can help me out with the items on the agenda. We shared our plans pretty openly with the staff, how they were going to be responsible for their responsibilities via online or whatever they needed to do to continue to get a paycheck. The health insurance transition update. Chris, if you could help me out on that one, as well as the onsite conversation and the teachers-on-call update.
Absolutely, Tom. Okay, so with item B, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, HR had set up two meeting dates between dean doctors and the dean administration and employees that have Mercy Insurance, and it was going to be a dean meet-and-greet. And the two meetings were going to be held on March 11th and April 6th. We tried to time it right before spring break and right after spring break. And we were able to hold our March 11th meeting. And during that meeting, we had a total of 24 employees come through and meet with a number of the doctors from the Dean Janesville Clinic and Hospital, as well as the surrounding areas. We had doctors from Stoughton, Fort Atkinson, Evansville, Edgerton, and I believe we had even doctors from the Whitewater Clinic, too. So those individuals were able to meet with our employees, ask questions, and then we had the dean health insurance organization on hand as well to go over a lot of the questions that pertained to the insurance side of things and how the transition would look. However, we were not able to hold our April 6th meeting due to the pandemic. But Dean has provided a dedicated email address for our staff that I communicated out, and they're able to access and have their questions or concerns answered through that email. And they also have the opportunity to reach out to any of the members of the HR team, and we'll be able to assist with those concerns or questions that they may have. Is there any questions about item B or anything you would like me to go over further?
Chris, this is Tom. When you said you did an email out to the people or just to the current Mercy subscribers, or was it to the entire staff?
It was to the entire staff, Tom, through the whole all-staff announcements. So everybody was able to, you know, see the communication and attend or be able to send in emails to that dean email as well if they have concerns. And we also reached out to our retirees that have Mercy Insurance as well to make sure that they were in the loop and knowing what's going on now that they're retired and they're no longer active employees.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Chris concerning the transition on our healthcare program? If not, Chris, near-site onsite conversation?
Absolutely. We had given an update on the near-site, it's near-site and possible onsite clinic, and we are starting to have those conversations again after taking a few months off. And we're looking at setting up a meeting in August, assuming we can get together with the dean hospital and the dean administration to start talking about what are those à la carte items that would go into a dean near-site or onsite clinic. We are also talking about sending out a survey to our staff, and that conversation came up... up actually within the last week here that we're going to be bringing forth to a future Human Resources Committee meeting here.
Any other questions concerning the onsite nearsite? The next item is teachers on call, and we have a document in the packet that shows our fill rate compared to some of our neighboring school districts, so Chris, if you would please.
Absolutely. I had a number of board members reach out to ask how is teachers on call faring? Are they meeting our needs? And to be able to step back and look at it from more than just the school district of Milton, we reached out to other school districts to see how they were doing, whether those districts had teachers on call or a few of them, and for our neighbors to the south that may still maintain those substitutes in-house. And the document that's in your board packet outlines your, or outlines the different overall fill rates. Some districts broke it down to, like Milton did, with teachers and paraeducators, and you'll see how Milton stacks up. One thing that I'd like to point the attention to is our para fill rate of 89.77% is really good based because of our two permanent substitute special education aides, and they have really filled in for as those go-tos for any unfilled absences the morning off. So, based off of the data that we received, we're doing very well with teachers on call. Now, this was back January's information, so it's a different layout now, not having needing the substitutes.
Chris, this is Tom again. As far as our contract with teachers on call, if we don't use their services, like we're not now, obviously, there is no additional fees to them at this time because we're not using their services, is that correct to assume?
Well, at this time, we are using long-term substitutes to help with the virtual learning, and these are for family medical leave cases that our employees are currently on, and we have a number of those that, we have those long-term substitutes that are still being paid through teachers on call, and we're paying those bills, but the day-to-day substitutes have been canceled. I believe we've canceled them through, I want to say through the 27th of this month. And we will continue to revisit that timeline once we know a little bit more direction on what the rest of the school year looks like, but we're playing it pretty much week to week.
Any other questions for Chris or Rich on the teachers on call program? The last item on the agenda for the HR committee report is an update on the support staff group in continuation of compensation for the 1920 school year, and I'll turn that over to either Rich or Chris or both of you.
I'll start with that and share, and Chris can maybe fill in some details, too, and Carrie Bradley has been involved in that discussion, so if she has things to add, you can feel free to chime in, too. This Agenda A and Agenda E kind of melded together from a couple of different HR committee meetings, and for both of those agenda items, it was a discussion around how we are moving forward with staff during our time that school is closed. And as mentioned earlier, we're really waiting for it to happen after April 24th, coming up pretty soon, this weekend, next week. We are still canceling schools, schools canceled like the rest of the schools across the state of Wisconsin, but waiting to see if we bring students and staff back on April 27th or not. So all of our decisions have been around, what are we doing through that time that we know that we're going to be closed? And as everyone knows, continuing to operate as a school district, we're providing virtual learning for all students across all grade levels, providing meals for students, providing support for students and families. And really, during the time of the closure that we've had so far up through April 24th, we've made a decision to keep people whole, continue to pay staff, continue to keep staff working across the district. In a conference call with our Badger Conference superintendents today, we are in the same position as all of the other schools in the Badger Conference. If a decision does come to cancel school beyond April 24th, then we will need to make a decision whether we want to continue to pay staff before that time or furlough staff, early staff off. And that decision would be for our hourly staff. Our teachers will continue to teach through the end of the school year, whether we're on, excuse me, whether we're onsite or offsite. Any of our, even our hourly staff are continuing to work either onsite or offsite, whether we're in virtual or anywhere we're back in school, but we make a decision for the, for some of our hourly staff. And I want to explain, one of the things we talked about with the HR committee was what happens and what those mean. If we continue to pay our all-hourly staff, there's an expectation that they continue to work, they keep working, whether it's onsite, if there's a requirement onsite, if they work offsite, they would be working offsite like me or most of our staff are right now. And we also talked to the HR committee about the possibility of doing what we call advanced pay, where if we get to the point where there aren't enough offsite, if there isn't enough offsite workforce, staff members on some of their days to fill their entire hours, we would have the ability to bank hours to be used at a later date, most part over the summer, but in the draft, the agreement that we have that we would use with staff, we would have the ability to use, have staff make up that time all the way through the end of December of 2020. So that's if a decision is made to continue to pay, and there are a couple of pieces that go into that, too, and I come back to those. If we do decide that our staff members, we aren't going to continue to pay, we'd have the option of either laying them off or furloughing them, and those two things aren't exactly the same. A layoff is similar to a termination, where our, their employment with us would come to an end. They wouldn't be receiving benefits any longer, they would be eligible for unemployment benefits, not only for the rest of the school year, but through the summer until the school year, the next school year started. And we do have a policy that lays out a termination or a reduction in force. It's Policy 4131. And in that policy, it details that if we have a reduction in force, we are required to give staff a 30-day notice before we do that. The timing doesn't work very well if we did decide to go down that path, because by the time we hear from the state and have a decision on whether we're going to continue beyond the 24th of April or not, and then made a decision on whether we would lay some staff members off or not, and we gave them the 30 days notice that's required in our policy, by that time we'd be very close to the end of the school year. But that is an option that we would consider if we do indeed end up closing for the remainder of the school year. Furloughing is a little bit different. If staff members are furloughed, it's not a permanent termination of our employment with them, it's a, it's more a temporary unpaid leave. They would continue to earn any benefits that they're eligible for, but wouldn't be working and wouldn't be drawing salary. They would be eligible for unemployment benefits, and if their furlough goes through the end of the school year, they'd be eligible for unemployment benefits until we brought them back at the start of the next school year. So all of those different things are things that we would need to weigh if we do get word that school is going to be closed for the rest of the year, and if we make that decision to move beyond the April 24th date. In talking with other Badger Conference districts, most of them are leaning toward, some of them have made the decision already to continue to pay staff for the rest of this school year. Some of them are leaning toward doing that but haven't done it yet, they're in the same position that we are, waiting to see if this is a permanent closure for the rest of this school year or not. So, Chris and Carrie Bradley or Tom or other members of the HR committee, if there's anything that you would like to add to that discussion, feel free to add that or if there are any questions that anyone has.
Hey, Rich, this is Karen. On that first option with that workforce reduction, is that a permanent option then for these employees?
I want to make sure that, I'm going to clarify the question with you first, because I missed the very start of that, but I think that I heard you say, Karen, you asked if the workforce reduction is a permanent for these employees?
Correct.
My understanding is that if we terminate employees and/or lay them off, our two terms that are pretty similarly used, that that would be, we could do that through the rest of this school year, but that is a termination of them, and then we would need to rehire if we were filling that position for the next school year, we would need to rehire for that position, either rehire that same person again or rehire another person for that position.
So...
Did that answer your question, Karen?
It did, and now I have a second, kind of a follow-up. So would that then require that individual that's been terminated to reapply for that position, or could you just go to that person and say, hey, we're now back in school, you want your job back?
I think I'll let Chris or Carrie take a shot at that, I think they know more of the specific details on it. Chris, do you want to go ahead?
Yep, absolutely. That, speaking to a layoff, we would reach out to see if that person is available to come back for that position. And now, Rich outlined a furlough and then a layoff, but, and there's a temporary layoff that would extend through a six-month period of time. And I'm looking over the details that we received from Shayna, and some of that we would have to explore further, but there is a temporary layoff and a permanent layoff. And with, if we're looking at a temporary layoff, that would, we would bring them back if they were available for the position, we would still go through the hiring process with them.
Okay, so in the layoff scenario, then, we are potentially putting our district at risk at losing our very good staff?
If the staff members are not available when we are bringing them back from a layoff or even back from a furlough, too, even in like what Rich was explaining on a furlough and those benefits are continuing, they may not want to continue with, on that path as well, and then they would be offered COBRA for their benefits.
Okay. I guess, I guess my concern is that if we were to move into the route of doing the reduction, the staff reduction route versus the furlough, we have a greater risk of losing staff than we furlough, than if we furlough them.
And I can, yeah, I would agree.
That is...
That's definitely a more likely outcome if staff are laid off or terminated versus being furloughed. So that's one of the, there are quite a few downsides to laying staff off or furloughing staff. You really are taking a risk that you're going to not be able to get that staff member back. Another piece that I didn't speak to yet is also the federal funds that are available, and there still is some uncertainty on this, but we've heard at least initial talk that with the CARES Act, that there's a possibility that funds that are available for school districts will be limited if districts aren't keeping their staff on. And we don't know that for certain yet, but another advantage, potential advantage to keeping staff on throughout these next two months is that it would make it more likely that we're eligible for some of the federal stimulus funds that are available to schools.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Joe, this is Mike Pierce. Hey, one option I don't think we talked to too much about the committee is just keep paying them, you know, this, we got, we've got in the budget to pay them, and we just pay them until the, in the school year, then you guarantee that you have the good employees again next year. I mean, that's one option, I think.
Eighty-thirds of that, of that rate, not only do we pay that, wow, for the next two months if we were to make this a year, but they're eligible for unemployment through the entire summer up until the off that's about to come back in the fall. So, and that was a very good clarification point for me, even I was one of those asking about these layoffs. If you do the math, it's actually almost probably more harmful, it is more harmful for the school district in terms of cost if we were laying employees off and then pay for their unemployment all the way through until the next school year. So that was one of the issues, and then with that, if you do lay those employees off, it reduces our chance of receiving any funding, because you can't pay your payroll until you're getting that money. That was one of the issues, and one of the other issues is that our payroll is very complex in the fact that how we pay people, and you have people that choose to be paid through the entire year, not just through the full year, essentially. So all of that also has to come into play on how that impacts people when you start doing layoffs, that has their checks have already been impacted by their decision to be paid all year round. That was two of the big things that we were talking about. And if you do the furlough, we are responsible for the benefits as well. So, we're paying the unemployment, and you're paying 100% of the benefits, not the portion that we're currently paying right now on the employee's holiday. So those are other factors that we should be considering going forward, future decisions.
Other HR committee members, anything else to add to that or any other questions from board members?
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
You know, I think there's still some factors of the equation that we really aren't sure on as far as any stimulus money coming back to the, to the district or what that additional $600 per week unemployment, if any of our employees are eligible for that. So I think at this point, we're on a good track and just holding firm in what we're doing until we get, until we get word of whether there's an extension of the closures. But I would certainly be in favor of doing whatever we can to make sure that we, we make it so we can bring as many of our staff back as want to come back and try to have options available that would work not only for the district, but it'd also work well for the individual.
Rich, this is Karen again, sorry. You know, I guess one of my concerns that I guess I would, you know, strongly encourage the future board to take a look at is, you know, with these teachers potentially facing unemployment, they're not going to make the salary that they have been now, and now we're also burdening them with potentially having to come up with insurance and pay for that as well. So I think that is something that needs to factor into any decision that we make.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point, Karen, and we want to kind of weigh all those different pieces. Just a quick, and I think I saw that Mike had a question, too, but one quick thing before Mike's question or comment. The timeline moving forward is when we get to the end of our meeting tonight and we schedule committee meetings, I think scheduling another HR committee meeting either for the end of this week or the early part of next week, because we definitely should know by then if the state schools are going to stay closed down for longer, if they are going to open back up on the 27th. Our committee meeting and, and then on the regular board meeting on the 27th, bring that to the full board for a decision by the full board. bring that to the full board for a decision by the full board. And Mike, did you have something?
Yes, yeah, this is Mike. I, well, I was just commenting, I didn't realize Diamond was speaking, I couldn't hear her real good. But anyhow, my comment was, we didn't talk too much about the other day, but I mean, we only have a month left of the school year, and we have it in the budget to just pay them, you know, and to the guarantee that we have them back next year, you know. You're talking about the support staff in here. The teachers are all paid, you know, with contracts.
Yep, and that's a good point to reinforce too. Our teachers and administrators have contracts for a certain number of days. Whether, whether we're teaching students in our buildings or teaching them remotely, a lot of our staff are going to continue to work. We're going to continue to need them to work. Our teachers, our administrators, and many of our support staff. So it really comes down to if school is canceled for the rest of the year, and if there are staff members that we identify that we wouldn't have work for them to do, then the board would need to make a decision on whether we want to keep them on or not. But so far, we found work for everyone to do, whether it's their regular work, helping in other areas, or working on professional development, helping serve meals. We know that this coming summer, we're going to be having quite a few teachers move classrooms, and if we have some staff members who don't have work to do now, but can bank hours, we could bring them in over the summer to help with the packing up classrooms for the move to our new or different spaces. And the ability to carry that advanced pay hours over all the way up until December would let us do some training in the fall with staff too, or some additional hours with staff too. We would need to make sure we stay in line with all labor laws, and we're working with Shayna on that as far as if staff members do accrue hours now and they work those hours in the summer. So we're working on what the logistics of that would need to look like to make sure that we're not violating any types of labor laws too.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments concerning the payment of our support staff? If not, thank you, Rich and Chris for the update. And Mr. President, that concludes our report for the HR Committee.
Okay, very good, thank you. And I would just give a nice shout-out to our HR Committee, our HR Department, and our administrative folks. They're doing a lot of the heavy lifting with some of the stuff that are challenging us right now. So thanks to everyone for a great job to stay on top of our people. So, moving along the agenda, new business is up next. Item A is discussion and possible action on creating a long-term capital improvement plan. And I think you all know that's a discussion that we've had in the past, and want to pick that discussion up again. And Carrie Bradley preface that at the most recent meeting, and we'll turn it over to her for background information there if she wants.
Okay, can you hear me okay, remote folks? All right, I'm trying to use my microphone, so we'll see how this goes in the same room with others as well. Those of you that are on the Finance Committee remember, at our February 17th meeting, we discussed the concept of a long-term capital improvement trust fund. And my committee members were familiar with that, and gave us a thumbs up to go and pursue. So I, with the help of Ryan Curless and Stephen Chance, we, since that date, have worked on creating a plan. There is a 10-year capital improvement plan that must be in place before you can create the trust. So at this meeting, there are two different motions. One is approving the plan, and then the second one will be to create the trust. The, one of the important things to remember, and I have it in the memo for you, is that we will continue to have our five-year capital maintenance and improvement plan, the living document, that will continue and will not change, and that is more of our short-term annual planning. The goal of the 10-year plan is really for us to identify 10 years into the future what we see coming and what our needs are. And then it is important to remember though that the plan can change. We just need to make sure that before we spend any money, that we're spending it on things that are in a board-approved plan. But you have flexibility. So to get our initial plan going, both Ryan and Stephen put together some 10-year projections so that we can start accumulating funds to take care of our facilities, and then technology infrastructure in the future. So do you have any questions?
Hey Carrie, I have a question. Couple of questions, actually. So the 10-year capital maintenance plan, long-term, it's not the same as a five-year, but is the same, first five years on a 10-year plan the same as the five-year capital plan?
We can check with Stephen, but I believe that was the task.
There's that right there.
Five more, yes.
That's what I kind of figured, but I just want to, you know, don't want to assume anything. And it would look 10-year long-term plan be like the five-year plan where we approve it every year? Or every five years? Or how does that, how does that look like it's going to be? What procedure for that?
I am thinking that it's really board preference. We can look at it every year and bring it back to update, because as you're aware with the five-year plan, life changes. And we certainly could bring that back annually, if that's whatever the board's preference is. We are in this five-year waiting period timeline, but really every year, if we're going to add another year, so we always have 10 years, it would make sense that we can continue this cycle if that is your preference. That makes a difference.
I can imagine that year six through 10 is probably going to change more than year one through five just because it's so far away and a lot of stuff's going to change, you know, kind of a big document, so. Yeah, to me, I mean, I was just kind of curious. I don't, I really don't have a preference one way or the other. I was just kind of wondering how that, how that would work. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Now it's on.
Okay, thank you.
Brian heard me. I said I agree with Brian. I think that it's a living document that as we do the capital maintenance plan every year, that it would just make sense to piggyback the 10-year plan and make sure that they stay in line.
Sounds good.
Actually, I have a question. If someone wants to look at the bottom of the memo there, we've got a motion that we probably want to move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the creation of a long-term capital improvement plan 10-year as presented. One second.
Thank you. Motion from Rich, sent in by Brian to approve a capital, long-term capital improvement plan. Any questions? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Okay. You reviewed the memo, but there's a couple highlights that I just want to mention to make sure that you are aware before you move forward of the consequences of this choice and what it can do, okay? So the first thing we need to understand is that this is a segregated account that we put money in, and it may not be used for cash flow purposes. So although it will have a fund balance, that fund balance is not available to support our operational cash flow needs. The second item I want to cover is that the funds need to be deposited by July 30th to be included in shared costs for equalization aid purposes in the next year. So if we deposit it by July 1, we date it back to June 30, and it is part of our shared costs then going into the next year. And I know you're all disappointed that you didn't get your equalization aid presentation today, but that's where the shared cost conversation will tie in. So you'll go aha when we do get to it, that is, that is how that works. And then the other thing to understand is there is an initial five-year waiting period. So we create the trust, and we cannot touch any money that we have put into it until five years and one day. And it's not for every dollar you put in, you wait five years. There's this initial period. But just to be aware that we're putting money into a trust, although it's not, the legislature called it a trust if it behaves like a trust, but it's a trust for our benefit, so that it's kind of a nuance to the name that they gave the law. So I think those were the key points here.
I do, of course. Thanks, Carrie. So thank you for bringing this, because I've been interested in the Fund 46 for a couple of years now, and I'm glad we're doing this. But just to make sure, for clarification, so everybody understands, my understanding is you put the money in day one, let's say it's, what was the deadline, like July 30?
Correct, 30 days after June 30.
Yeah, I do the math there. So if you put it in there July 30, that's the start, that's when the time starts ticking. And then anything you put in, like if you put in $100,000 like a month before the five-year mark is up, you can still use that $100,000, correct? I mean, it's, it's just you can't touch anything until after five years, and it doesn't matter when you put that in, within that five years, you can still use it.
Correct, yes. That's, when I use the phrase five years and a day, you can spend any money that has been put into that trust after five years and a day. And I think your example is a good example. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, this is Rich. Can you share a couple examples of how you've seen that transplanting in other districts, and how sometimes it works?
Uh, sure. In my past life, I was around when the law came out, and so that's where five years and a day comes from, and 30 days after June 30. So when it initially came out, the big focus was on districts that are positively aided in the formula like we are. And this is a way for us to level off our costs so that we continue to get positively aided, rather than having spikes. And so districts have done any number of things when it comes to the plan. Some have picked one specific project that they're saving money for. Many people from my conversations with them essentially took their five-year plan, like we did, and turned it into a 10-year plan. The idea is that these are to be for capital outlays, and typically those are related to facilities and infrastructure or sites. And when we put our plan together, we have technology as well, because a lot of those big-ticket technology items are infrastructure-related. So although they're not facilities, they're IT, but, but they are capital outlays as well. And so our capitalization threshold here is, costs over $5,000. To me, what the plan usually focuses on are those really, those big-ticket items, things that are more than your typical budget can bear. Or things people sometimes use, start now. So let's say they received a large gift, or they went to referendum and got some money to do a facility improvement. They would start this plan to show that they are saving money to take care of that with the taxpayers recently purchased. So sometimes they would couple it with that as well.
Thank you, Carrie.
Carrie, this is Tom. Yes. My concern, I'm certainly in favor of looking, looking into this. I'm not sure right now would be a good time to start it, meaning this year, because it's my understanding it has to come out of the general fund. And right now, we certainly probably don't know for sure what our state payments are going to be for, for the upcoming year. We've received correspondence that has stated it could be not getting the additional $179 per student to being the same, or potentially a cut. So, you know, we've had conversations in the past too, as well as trying to build up our fund balance to help with the short-term borrowing part. So with the budgets that we're looking at potentially in the coming year, it's going to be really tough to do either one of those. We're not going to be able to have probably a lot of excess funds to put in our fund balance, and we're probably not going to have a lot of excess funds to put into Fund 46, because we don't know what next year may bring, for sure. So I am in, I am in favor of looking into this, but I'm not so sure we should jump in by adding a whole lot of money to get the clock started ticking as of June 30.
Carrie, is there a minimum that we can put in? Just to get the start clicking, ticking?
And that is, that is what I was going to mention, is that, you know, we can put in as little as a dollar. We probably want to maybe do $100. And to get it started, to get the clock ticking, as you say. And then as things unfold, we have until, I don't want to wait until July 30 because the money actually has to be posted in the account. So, but at the, toward the middle of July, we may have more information from the state to help make this decision. So if you wanted to, we could do the small amount to get it started, and then address Tom's concerns in the future with, and make the decision of how much at a later date. So yes, we can put in a small amount.
Yeah, I understand Tom's perspective, and I agree with that. And Diamond had a great question. And talking to some other business executives from other school districts, that's, the important part is getting that time, that clock to start. It doesn't matter like how much you start out with, as long as you get that started, because otherwise, if you, the longer you wait, the longer, you know, the five years takes longer to get to, obviously. So even if we do, did like $100, I think it's well worth it. It's definitely, you know, because we might not be able to put anything in this year, but possibly, you know, down the road, we may. So we have that app, you know, that flexibility to do that.
Carrie, would it be the path we take moving forward? If we decide to start it and we do it with $100, then creating what our plan is over the next five years? Of what our goal is as a district or as a school board that we want it? How much funds we want to have put in? What's our goal each year? How, what do we do next once we start it? Or what would you recommend us look at as a path to get to having, not just opening account, but getting money in there to support these new facilities that we are doing in the 10-year plan?
Okay, so one piece of Fund 46 that I didn't mention before that people got really excited about is you don't have to decide until July. So, you know, we budget conservatively in Milton, and I think historically have, and we budget conservatively. And then life happens, and sometimes we get to the end of the year, and with our conservating budgeting, and no surprises, with other needs, you will have some funds left over. So one of the positive pieces of this Fund 46 is you really can wait until July. Yeah, some districts plan in their budget, if they have room for it. They plan upfront to put some money in, and then when you get to year end, you look at can we, you know, do we, do we want to put more, more in? Because the, the piece, I don't want to get too far down the aid path here, but just to be aware, as was pointed out, we don't know what we're going to have right now for resources next year. And we may want to hang on to some dollars at the end of this year to... And we may want to hang on to some dollars at the end of this year to support us next year. But we need to be aware that our aid payments are based on shared cost. And so if we don't spend the money, then it's not going to be aided, which is fine. But if our aid goes down, our tax levy goes up. So we're always working to kind of balance all these moving parts as best you can. And not only what we do makes a difference, what everybody else in the state does too. So we can't, the rest of the state piece, we have no control over. But we just need to understand how our choices will potentially impact what happens with the tax levy. So you're working on being prudent custodians of taxpayer dollars and we're looking at saving for the future. But depending upon where we land in the formula and when the calculation is done, the odds are just aware, right? The goal is usually to try and keep the levy level if we can. So it's just a consequence piece and there's a lot of moving parts.
Were there questions? Lots of people who are remote right now.
This is Mike Pierce. To answer Tom's, I think our question was to get it going this year, even if it's only $100, just to get the clock ticking. I don't think we're thinking about putting a lot of money in it this year. It's just that then if you get on third and fourth year, you put money in, you get the money back out, you know? So it's not going to be anything that affect, $100 shouldn't affect the budget too much. But I just think it's something we should get going and then we can work into it later. That's all.
This is Karen and I happen to agree with both Mike and Brian and Diamond as well. I think we need to take a look at at least getting this started. I think doing this, considering we have an operational referendum that's going to be coming due and we're going to have to look at that. And one of the issues, five years ago, when we asked for the money was what were we going to do with it? You wanted, you know, the capital referendum, how are you going to pay for that maintenance, et cetera? I think this is a really good way to show our community, our stakeholders, our taxpayers that, you know, we are looking forward into our future and how we're going to pay for repairs or other infrastructure things in the future.
Okay, anybody else?
I won't get any comments because it's redundant. I think I agree with what most of the stuff that's been mentioned here. So you again, an action item and someone wants to bring a motion forward, we can.
I would like to make an emotion. Look at me. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing a long-term capital improvement trust fund, Fund 46 as presented.
I'll second that.
Karen and Diamond.
Thank you. Motion was Brian. I'm sorry. I know, it's so rare. Oh, and I was looking at you and I said wrong name, my apologies. Motion from Brian, seconded by Karen, to approve the establishment of a long-term capital improvement fund, trust fund, the Fund 46 as presented. Is there any other discussion or questions related to that motion? Hearing none, we'll vote unanimously and do a roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Karen, can you hear me?
Yep, aye.
Oh, aye, I'm sorry. I was going to ask for a yes, a aye.
Oh, yes, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Is yes? Diamond?
Yes.
Is yes? Mike?
Yes.
Is yes? Rick?
Yes.
Is yes? Joe is yes? We'll let Brian go last with a resounding.
Yes.
Yes. That is a 7-0. Thank you, thank you, folks. We have established a Fund 46. Also in new business and somewhat related is an eye towards updating some of our other components infrastructure-wise, is discussion and possible action on proposed wireless access point and network switch refresh projects. And I will bring in Mr. Kerless if he is able to join us.
I am, thanks, Joe. Can everyone hear me okay?
I think so.
All right. I want to start off by thanking the board for approving the capital plan. A lot of work went into those pieces. I'm sure on Thieves' end, but I can definitely tell you a lot of work went into the technology one from a lot of folks. So thank you for approving that and paving the way for us to be able to fund those projects. I'm going to talk through, just to kind of skip over the highlights of some of the materials you've already received. Going back a couple of months in February, the school district posted two requests for proposals through the federal E-Rate program in response to needs, both by the building referendum and by the state and age of our technology supporting our networking environment. The E-Rate program is a facet of the FCC. It's hosted by the Universal Service Administrative Company. And what it seeks to do is provide us some support via reimbursement to be able to make purchases in the technology environment. So the first RFP we put out was the Wireless Access Point RFP. And it was a request for 145 wireless access points in conjunction with a building referendum to go into new locations that we're adding into our buildings. We had, let me pull up my notes here. So we had three responses to that proposal request. We had a BCS ISIT response at 202,000, PDS response at 118,000, and a Presidio response at 116,000. The district sat down and reviewed those proposals in great detail. And the chosen and recommended proposal vendor is Presidio for that project. The reason we picked them was first and foremost because they had the best, excuse me, the best dollar amount, which is the primary, is the primary piece that we're looking for when we're reviewing. It's the primary determining factor and that is set by E-Rate rules, but it's also what we do in the district. But we also have a longstanding history of success with them, working with them directly in the school district of Milton. With estimated total wireless access point project cost of 116,000 and an estimated potential E-Rate discount of 11,000, it's anticipated that the school district would need to commit a minimum of 103,000 during the upcoming 2021 school year. And that'll be out of referendum funds to cover that project. The network switch refresh project, RFP, was put together because the district's network switches are aging out. They've reached the recommended replacement age of that six to eight-year timeframe. They also are reaching end of service, end of life in the fall of 2021. And so there is a plan the district's been operating on prior to my arrival here that had planned to replace them in the coming school year. We picked that up. We had an opportunity to go out again through the E-Rate program to post, to receive some reimbursement to do this work. And it's a very similar process to what I just outlined for the wireless access point piece where we put the RFP out in February. We received three responses. The three responses were actually from the same three companies. We had one from BCS ISIT at 473,000, one from PDS at 356,000, and one from Presidio at 461,000. The chosen and recommended proposal vendor again for this project is Presidio. Part of that is what I mentioned before, that they're a known vendor with a longstanding history of success. The other piece is that they offered the best pricing when compared against the other two on equalized terms. And I want to go into a bit of detail on that piece because it's not obvious in the numbers. The proposal submitted by PDS, although it does appear less expensive, about 105,000 less expensive, was not competitive and it's for a myriad of reasons. First, the proposal submitted by PDS did not meet the full requirements of, nor respond to all aspects within the RFP as posted. It omitted some hardware licensing, service and support costs for at least five sections of the RFP that we posted. Also, when directly comparing hardware rates that represent the majority of the costs within each proposal, Presidio's rates were superior. And then the other piece was that the support services indicated in PDS's proposal were neither to the scope nor the scale of those submitted by Presidio. And that's important when we put a RFP out there that we get a response that encompasses the amount of work that we actually have to do. With an estimated total network switch refresh project cost of 461,000 and an estimated potential E-Rate discount of 38%, it's anticipated that the district would need to commit a minimum of 286,000 during the upcoming 2021 school year out of general funds to complete this Both of these are vital to continuing to provide the quality of education that we're used to for the school district and the community of Milton. What questions do you guys have for me?
This is Brian. I have a couple of questions for you, Ryan. So the 103,000 for the access, wireless access points, you mentioned that that would be coming from referendum funds. We're talking about the capital referendum that that would come out of or correct?
That's coming from the building referendum funds, yep. That's new equipment going in in conjunction with the building referendum that we took that piece out of the bidding so that I could take it and bid it through the E-Rate program to get a discount on it, to stretch our referendum dollars out.
So it would be the capital referendum?
Yes.
So I guess one of the questions I would have then, and I don't know if anybody can answer this here, I hope, hopefully, but obviously this wasn't something that was, that was built into the referendum budget. So I guess my question is, how are we adjusting for this additional cost? Are we taking something off of the plate from the referendum projects or are we taking it out of contingency funds? How is that additional 103,000 going to be accounted for?
Ryan, I'd like to recommend Stephen answer that question.
That's a great, great question, Brian. And actually, this piece is accounted for as part of the capital referendum. This would actually be coming out of the district's capital referendum FF and E budget. So the FF and E budget is furnitures, fixtures and equipment that includes classroom technology. So we would also be accounting for like smart boards in classrooms. And this is just one piece of that technology that would be part of the district's FF and E budget.
So this was already, just paraphrasing, this was already actually considered as part of the fixtures and furniture and equipment. Perfect, perfect. And then the next question I would have is probably a more pressing one is the switch refresh project of right around 286,000. That would have to come out of our general fund for the 2021 school budget. And I guess my concern is kind of what Tom had mentioned in the previous, the previous presentation is we really don't know what our 2021 budget's going to be. And that's a pretty big price tag. I realize we need for the students to get the quality of education that they currently have. I guess my question is, how good is the quote for? Is it something we can kind of wait until we see what, how the budget shakes out or how we're going to accommodate or at least prepare for this additional dollars in the general fund?
I can share a little bit of that and then Ryan Kerless and Kerry Bradley can add in to fill in some of the details too. I think it's a very valid question because we do have some uncertainty about our revenues for next year. This is something that we, it's vital enough that I think we would need to make if our revenues are down for next year from what we're planning and we have to make some adjustments, this would be something that I would consider to be a priority. And we'd have to make adjustments in other areas, maybe potentially putting some other projects off for a year. Long-term, this is a great use for our trust fund. If we're building towards these large major purchases over time, then we don't have that large hit in one year. And we can plan that throughout the course of our 10-year plan and put some money away for that over time through that trust fund. For this coming year, I would consider it a pretty big priority. Ryan can share a little bit about the timeline on it though. There are some deadlines with E-Rate. In order to be eligible for that E-Rate funding, there's some deadlines that we need to meet. So Ryan, do you want to share a little bit more about those?
I will, yep. So a big, a big part of why we're doing this is as a part of the E-Rate program, we're required to determine and agree that we can accommodate our end of what's left over to purchase when the time comes. We wouldn't want to go ahead with a program, give them the okay, they do a lot of work on their end and when the time comes, well, have not made any preparations to be able to pay for it. We are required to get back with what's called a 471 here by the end of April to be able to get that ball rolling, to get the products and services coming. The next step, once we agree that this is something we want to do, is our projects will be reviewed by a reviewer through the E-Rate program. We're probably going to get some questions that we'll need to answer, fill in some more information pieces. When they come back and agree to pay for their portion of it, we receive a funding commitment decision letter. And it's at that point then, provided it's beyond July 1 of the coming school year, that we can start to actually look at this like a real project, something that we're going to get done. When the time comes to do the work, we would ask the winning proposal submitter to come back and review what they put in a proposal for, to make sure that we're only doing the work that we need them to do, using contemporary pricing, contemporary models, things like that. There's a little bit of wiggle room in there. We want to make sure that everybody comes out ahead. So what we're doing right now is really just, we're looking at it to agree that this is something that we want to do and commit to finding a way to pay for it.
And I don't know, is there anything else that you want to add to that?
The only thing I want to put on the table as well, when we're talking about budgeting, is that nothing, we can see where the current year budget lands and we can choose to say that we're going to use some of our unspent dollars this year on a project next year. So mechanically, you could commit fund balance that has been accumulated this year for a next year project. I mean, there's other things that fund balance has been committed to, but nothing would prevent us on the front end from saying, we're going to commit $19, $20 to pay for this in 2021. So that when we do our revenues and expenses on paper, it's not going to look balanced, but we have committed fund balance. So that would be a way to true it up as well. I think too, Ryan, when we talked, there's a variety of timelines and you get the work going and rolling, right? But I think there might be a slight window for to pull the plug, if you will, but it's pretty soon.
Yeah, yep. We want to get everything in within the next, I want to say that date is actually the, so the 29th is when everything has to go out. And we want to have our ducks in a row before that, have everything ready to go. And the big piece to keep in mind is that this is not, at the end of the day, the district retains the right to determine whether or not we're going to do the project. going to do the project.
Ryan, could you elaborate further on, you said that the, the equipment is near end of life. What would happen? Or what could potentially happen if we don't replace these network switches before something like that were to happen?
Yeah. End of life, end of service, it means it's not manufactured anymore, it's not sold anymore and the support ends. So as, as a part of our foundation of our network, we carry for our equipment that we have. Thanks, thanks, Diamond. Sorry. Carry a very robust support because the equipment is the foundation of our network. We want to be able to go out and get replacements right away, get support right away. We need to be up and and operating all the time. And we don't have the latitude to wait for anything beyond really even a few hours in the same day, we have equipment failure. And what happens is if we proceed using the equipment, there's a higher probability for failure, but that's actually not the concern. The concern is that getting support and getting replacement hardware becomes much more difficult to do. If we have to go out to a secondary market, we could find ourselves going, for instance, a week with school without access to the network or internet. That's an extreme example.
Hey, Ryan, it's Karen and I just have to ask this. Is there any possibility, because we are doing, going with Presidio for both of these projects, that we could get a discount?
Uh, you know, I did not ask them that, but I, I can tell you that we are getting a significant discount on the hardware that's coming in.
Okay.
It is significant. And I, I am very happy with what I'm seeing in there. I feel really, really good about what we've got, but you know what? I will take that back to our rep because we might as well ask.
Well, yeah, there's no harm in asking, I guess. But I tend to agree with you from what we, you know, from what I've seen here, it looks like we are getting, you know, a pretty big bang for our buck, if you will.
Okay, does anyone else have anything question wise related to that subject? Otherwise, again, an action item for us and there's a proposed motion. Red and lengthy, if someone wants to take a whack at it. At the bottom of the memo.
I'll make a motion to approve selection of Presidio's proposal for the wireless access point project, Presidio's proposal, the network switch refresh project, committing the necessary funding to see each project through.
No, I don't want it.
Just heard and I'm allowed to repeat it, but the memo for you folks to follow through on both. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we'll roll call both this one, too. I'll go remotely first. Tom?
Yes.
The yes. Karen?
Yes.
The yes. Ann? Mike, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And then those of us in the room here, Diamond?
Yes.
Is a yes. Joe is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Ryan?
Yes.
Is a yes. That is a seven zero motion to approve that. Approve that motion. Okay, and the final new business is section on 2019, 2020 open enrollment applications.
We just have one application. School is still in session, so we can still have open enrollment applications through the end of the year. This is a student out, the student moved in from out of state and has never been a student with us.
I'll make a motion to approve the open enrollment applications as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion, seconded by Rick, to approve the open enrollment alternative application. My question, otherwise, all the good and bad, I?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion clearly passes. Okay, thank you. We are moving up to miscellaneous which first item there is our staffing report, which there is a copy of in your board packet, of course. Two appendix agreements and three retirements.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the staffing report as presented.
Motion to approve the staffing report.
I want somebody remote.
I heard Brian say second. Did I hear you, Brian, say second?
Indeed, we got a motion from Rick, seconded by Ryan, to approve the staffing report. Questions?
I would like to make an amendment to approve the staffing report for retirements only.
In follow-up to Brian's motion for amendment, I have a question. Kind of, I think I'm in the same boat as where Brian's probably going. So our staffing hires is for two coaches. But I guess with school not being in session, what are these assistant coaches doing? And if we're not?
Brian's amendment doesn't have a second yet, but we'll leave it right there and segue out for a second to get the background and I think that'll clarify.
I can, I can share. In this staffing report, there are two coaches who are listed, an assistant coach for the high school track team and an assistant coach for the high school softball team. Because we didn't have a second meeting in March, it's been a month since our, our last regular meeting. Both of those positions were actually hired and, and started at the start of the season for each of those sports. So for the track team, they had a week of practice in before it was into their second week when, when school was canceled across the state. And for the, the softball team, they had a day or two of, of practice before school was canceled. So these are positions that we had hired while the season was still rolling. There is still a possibility that the season will start up again. And what are, all of our coaches are doing, we, we're doing the same thing right now with our coaches that we're doing with our hourly staff. They're continuing to work, they're sending out individual workouts to students who are part of their teams and not just for coaches for these sports, but for our other spring sports and for different clubs and, and student groups that are meeting. They are still communicating with students, providing them with motivation, with individual, individual workouts to work on on their own. So at least what we're doing with all of our coaches right now is the same thing that we're doing with our other hourly staff. They're continuing to work and there's an expectation that they would work with students and we're continuing to pay them. I would recommend that we continue to do that at least through April 24th. And then we find out if we're coming back. I would assume if we come back, then spring sports would start up again. If we don't come back, then we tie that into the decision that we have with other, other staff members about whether we want to continue to pay them or not continue to pay them.
Okay. Do you still want to amend?
Yes.
Okay, Brian still wants to amend it, that means a second.
I'll second it, that's mine.
I think Mike may have seconded.
I can second.
I was off the screen and I didn't see.
Okay, Diamond, do you want to second?
Is that what you were doing, too? Mike, can you hear me here?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize, we've got a little challenge here. So the amendment to the motion would be to consider the staffing report for just the three retirees. Any other discussion on that amendment?
Just a, a, a real quick. My view or my point of view, or I guess it's probably more of a question. One thing I'm concerned about is when we approve this, it's for the whole season and to go back, seems that's a little bit can be problematic, problematic. So one of the questions I would need to say is, can we just prorate it? Instead of paying the whole season, they, you know, believe that the track focus year and a portion of whatever what they're doing now. Is that something that we consider? Obviously, we'd have to consider it at our next meeting.
Okay, anybody else on the amendment?
I, I'm having trouble hearing people.
From each our standpoint, has anything to, to add to that?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of issue hearing what Brian's question or statement was.
Brian, Brian asked about, and Brian, if I miss any part of that, go ahead and fill in, but Brian asked about the possibility of prorating the pay for these coaches and if, if we, if the board approved the staffing agenda in, in its full, giving these coaches, hiring these coaches, would we be committed to continuing to pay them throughout the rest of the year or would we be able to treat them like other coaches if the board makes a decision with the entire coaching staff at, at the next meeting?
Okay. I think that we would be able to treat them the same way that we have treated the coaches that we've hired. You know, if, like the coaches we've hired in early March, late February for those sports and before all of this took place, we were planning on them working through the whole season. So depending on what's going to happen on our, the next board meeting with the rest of the coaching staff, I would think that we, they would be in the same situation that our coaches that were hired in the last two months would be as well. So if the board decides to, you know, keep them on, pay their full wages because they're coming, the students are coming back, that would be one option. Another may be that they would be laid off, like we were talking about with the other staff members. Because the work is no longer needed. That would be another option. So I think in a roundabout way, yes, to Brian's thing, we would be able to pay them for that work that is done. And we would have an updated appendix agreement for those individuals.
Okay. Anybody else questions on the amendment? We have to vote that first.
Yes, yes, I, it was hard for me to understand some of the conversation, so. Excuse me, so the motion is to approve the retirements and do nothing with the two part-time coaching positions at this point? Is that the motion?
The motion is to approve the staffing report to only include the three retirements. Is that correct?
So we have the two coaches that are already working and with the possibility that they are not going to have a contract or a letter of an appointment. Is that, is that a safe assumption? As a possibility?
If, this is Rich, if, if the board doesn't approve their hire, then they would be, they wouldn't have a contract, you're correct, Tom. And they have, they have been working since the dates that are listed there. It's a little bit of a unique situation. We do have sometimes once in a while, we, we definitely won't like to hire staff and then bring it to the board with us having this gap here in, in late March without having that second board meeting. And sometimes those sports, coaches or other, other staff members sometimes, too, those positions are filled and then brought to the board for approval. So you definitely in a unique situation now that after they were hired, we did have the, the closure of the schools. By, by approving their hire now, from what Chris Tukendorf said earlier, if we approve their hire tonight, then we could treat them the same way that we decide to treat other coaches. We could pay them for the work that they've been doing so far. And then if we don't come back, we could make a decision on whether we want to continue to pay these coaches and our other coaches and advisors for activities that, that aren't freaking place the way they normally would take place because of the closure.
I, I just think that they should be, they've already started their work and because of the lack of meeting, they were under the assumption that they were going to be under a letter of an appointment. They should be approved this evening and then looked at, at our next meeting and as far as paying the coaches or whatever the case may be. I think it's, it's, it's setting a, it's not sending a good message to those two individuals saying, yeah, you've been working for three weeks now, but we're not going to pay you.
Okay, anybody else before we vote? So we're voting on the amendment to the original motion. The amendment is to recruit the staffing report to only include the three retirements. We'll roll call vote the amendment and we will start remotely again, I guess. Karen?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
And Tom?
No.
No. Diamond?
No.
They know. Joe is a no. Rick?
No.
Is a no. And Ryan?
Yes.
Is a yes. That amendment fails six to one. I'm sorry, sorry. Amendment fails five to two. So that leaves the original motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Staffing report as presented. Hearing none, we'll go and vote that and I will go in the same order. Karen?
I'm sorry. Karen, could you say that again? Your mic is off.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yes, thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Is a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Is a yes. Joe is a yes. Diamond?
Yes.
Is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Ryan?
No.
Is a no. That motion passes six to one. So the staffing report is approved. And Karen? We will bump down to B, which is gifts and donations. That is included in the board packet there. We have $1,536.13 from our always generous community.
I'll make a motion to approve gifts and donations with red.
I'll second.
Thank you. Were you certain you, Mike, because you're remote?
Yeah, I figured by the time I made the motion, they already have money spent.
Rick, seconded by Diamond to approve our gifts and donations. Any discussion? Do not. All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 And the gifts are accepted with our gratitude as usual. Okay. Maybe another important piece here are upcoming dates for potential meetings that we need to schedule.
Yeah, we, we, I mentioned earlier that having an HR committee meeting either the end of this week or the early part of next week, so that we get that in before our regular board meeting on the 27th. And one of the things that we'll be talking through at that meeting will be what we're doing for the rest of this school year. We should have, hopefully by the end of this week, if we want to be safe and schedule it for the early part of next week. We should have word on whether and whether we're going to be returning to school this year and then we need to talk through some of those issues, first with the HR committee and then with the full board. So HR committee members, I don't know what your schedules look like if we look at a week from today, possibly with that Monday, the 20th, work out all right for people?
I'm free anytime. This is Mike.
I can do 8:00 AM or like afternoon.
I'm, I'm free for anyone, anytime.
Could we do at noon on Monday, the 20th? Diamond, does that work for you? Chris Tukendorf? Chris Tukendorf? Monday, the 20th at noon for HR committee meeting? Okay, all right, so we have that one scheduled. And then, um, we kind of put our policies on pause as we've been working through all of the different pieces of, uh, of our school closure and, and virtual learning. But if we wanted to pick up on some, some policies again, I guess my recommendation would be that we wait and see if school, uh, starts up again or not before we schedule. But maybe policy committee members, if you think through, uh, what your uh, schedule looks like, and then when we meet on the 27th, we'll know we're either back in school or we're not, and we can schedule a policy committee meeting sometime for after that.
Please bear in mind, our committees may change a little, the retiring board member for sure.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would, would there be interest in getting another policy committee meeting in before the board change is over, or, or a preference to wait and have the new board, uh, work on policies?
Uh, this is, this is Tom, and I think it'd probably be appropriate if we get the, the, the new board members and the new committee assignments put in place before we continue on with the policy.
I think that makes a lot of sense to me too, and I'm seeing some heads nod here, so we'll hold off on that. I do think, even though we may have some change over, we'll have some change over on the HR committee. I think because of the timeliness of making some decisions around the payments for staff, uh, if school is closed, I think we still need to have that meeting with that group next week.
Yeah, yes, I, I agree with that, and I think I'll take this opportunity to, since this will be my last, uh, full board meeting, uh, just to, to kind of touch base a little bit on my last nine years of, of being on the school board of Milton. This will make 31 years that I've been on educational boards, um, both local, state and national level. I certainly have learned a lot, uh, over the 31 years. Um, the one thing that, um, I've always tried to keep on the forefront is our decisions that we make, are they going to help the students? And I think we've done a pretty good job of that. As administrators and as board members over the last nine years, now, one example that comes to mind is our one-to-one initiative. Uh, we are light years ahead of a lot of districts as far as being forced into virtual learning. Uh, a lot of districts didn't have any type of virtual learning, uh, only as a conception. And so I think it's, it's hats off to, uh, administration, past administration and past boards that we were able to go to the one-to-one initiative when we did, which, which puts us in a, in a great spot that, that we're in right now. Uh, so I would also like to, uh, thank the community for supporting me for the last nine years. Um, thank previous board members. I learned a lot. And, um, if the election results that I, I've seen this recently, uh, there are a couple new board members that I feel very good at leaving, uh, the board administration in the place where it's at, and hopefully they will continue success uh, in the future. I know the next few months are going to be, uh, pretty, pretty tricky uh, with the unknown budgets and revenues and all of that. But I have all the confidence in the world, uh, in the district of Milton and continue doing the great things for kids. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Tom. You stole into what I was going to, uh, end the meeting with a little bit before we actually are ending it. Session coming up, but, uh, from, uh, from my perspective, I certainly want to offer my thanks for all of that you've done for the community and for our school district. And, uh, no small task, uh, for lots of the accomplishments that have happened, so. Um, I'm not going to go much further than that and, uh, just give you a little bit of a segue that when we can meet in person, we'll probably invite you back and, um, be able to maybe further recognize, uh, uh, some of the service that we're giving our students and families and community, so. Um, are there any other meeting dates we do schedule?
No, our next regular meeting is two weeks from tonight, uh, Monday, uh, will be Monday, April 27th.
Okay, that includes meeting arrangements, and like I said, uh, on our agenda, first is the so, um, pursuant to a motion forthcoming to go into executive session, you know, page statute 1985, parent one, parent C, who consider a foreigner promotion compensation or performance evaluation data and for which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is regarding 2020 to 2021, all employee compensation. Uh, so I need a motion to that effect, and then we'll vote that. Don't move. Motion from Rick, seconded by Brian, uh, to go into executive session. Uh, we'll vote that. Uh, Karen, you're up first.
Yes.
The yes. Tom?
Yes.
The yes. And Mike?
Yes.
The yes. And Joe? The yes. Diamond?
Yes.
Rick?
And Brian? Yes.
Seven yeses.
Joe, one quick thing before we go into executive session, we will need, uh, all of the board members, make sure that you log out of this current session uh, and then log in separately to the executive session. So to log out of this session, you can close out your tab, uh, that this is open in. And then if you go into board docs, uh, once you've logged out of this session, if you go into board docs and click on the executive session, uh, agenda item, at the very bottom of that page, uh, is a link to open the new executive session. So if there, if you're having any difficulties getting into that executive session, uh, give me a call on my cell phone and we'll help you out.
Yes, so I'll call the motion passed. We are in executive session, and just a reminder to all the folks remote to, uh, please respect the confidentiality of such.